Thank you very much Peter and good afternoon to you all. My dear brother and former Prime Minister of the Federal Republic of Ethiopia, Alim Aliam Desaline, Dr. Kalibata, all participants, ladies and gentlemen. Let me begin by greeting you all and to say how honoured indeed I am to be speaking to you today as your host during the Africa Green Revolution Forum Summit. The Africa Green Revolution Forum is indeed playing a very key role in the food systems and agricultural transformation on our continent. And indeed it is very notable that the forum and the past has successfully converged key stakeholders from all over Africa and across the globe to discuss pertinent issues around agriculture and food security. Without doubt, we appreciate the great work that is being undertaken by the Africa Green Revolution Forum in bringing us all closer to our shared aspirations in the agricultural sector and making Africa that much more food secure. I would be appalled if I did not note the immense gratitude, the emphasis on policies and the role that these policies play in boosting productivity in agriculture and enterprises also in agriculture and the agricultural food chain. So this event comes at a time when the whole continent and indeed the world at large is battling COVID-19, a unique pandemic that has thrown in one way the gains of many decades across all our social economic sectors into total disarray. But however, some of us believe that all is not lost and we believe that by working together, we will overcome and we shall indeed bounce back stronger and even better. Ladies and gentlemen, our young people, some of whom are amongst you today, are Africa's greatest strength. In our young people, Africa has a vibrant and innovative pool of agents of change who can and who will indeed drive the transformation of our continent. The sons and daughters of Africa are reaching out for a new future in which their individual and their collective contribution will transform not only our continent but the world. At this youth town hall, our focus today is increasing the participation of our youth in agriculture. And it is important that at this stage we know that the youth unemployment rate of about 20% remains a huge crisis across the African continent. A continent where our young people account for almost 60% of the total population. This reality however is in sharp contrast to the average age of the African farmer, which currently stands at 60 years here in Kenya. Agriculture and agribusiness therefore presents enormous opportunities for this young generation to not only create decent and honorable jobs for themselves but also to improve food security in Africa. However, what remains conspicuous in most of our nations is the very low participation of the younger generations in the agricultural sector. Agriculture in Africa needs these young people and our young people should begin to see and understand the immense opportunities and benefits available in agriculture. Today is an opportunity for the youth participating in this conversation to enlighten us on what would inspire them and their peers to participate more in this sector. We, and I repeat again, we are not here to dictate solutions to our youth or to force them to buy in to preconceived ideas and already formulated solutions. We are here to listen to you and to your ideas. We are here to engage and to receive the ideas that will guide the development of policies, programs and projects that better suit the aspirations of the sons and daughters of our continent. We must also constantly find ways of sharing our experiences and progress that we are making in transforming agriculture into a youth-friendly space. Through such forums as this one, we hope to be able to direct our policies and strategies towards what is working and adopted to our unique social economic and political environments. So ladies and gentlemen, there are many areas in agricultural value chains that our young people can tap into. These include agricultural technologies, on and off-farm ventures, aggregation, transportation of the produce, value addition, among many other ventures. So our young people should have a 360-degree view of agriculture and see where they can fit in and participate fully and meaningfully. Ladies and gentlemen, our role as governments is to listen to our youth and thereafter ensure that the systems as well fit in to their operating environment and are conducive for greater youth participation. I want to give you the assurance that my administration, through our Ministry of Agriculture, Livestock and Fisheries and Cooperatives, has received various input from our youth across our country and we still seek more. We have as a result developed the Kenya Youth Agribusiness Strategy 2018 to 2022 and through this identified and began to address some of the challenges and barriers that prevent young people from engaging meaningfully in agribusiness. Some of these include negative perceptions and attitudes towards agribusiness. Others are limited access to financial services, inadequate skills, knowledge and information, limited access to land for agribusiness, limited access to markets, limited value addition, inadequate policies to support youth in agripreneurship, climate change, environmental management and other cross-cutting issues. In the 1970s, when the strategy of engaging school-going children in agriculture was introduced here in Kenya, they would spread the word to their communities about new technologies in agriculture. And in the process, they too got quite engaged and enjoyed their participation in agriculture. This model then was known as the 4K Clubs, which is a Swahili acronym for Kuungana, Kufanya, Kusaidia Kenya, which for our friends outside Kenya means coming together to work towards building Kenya through agriculture. Though the enthusiasm declined in the late 1990s for the 4K Clubs, I still believe that this model holds the potential to massively change the attitude of young people towards agriculture. And this is why my administration has focused on changing the negative perception of youth towards our agriculture through the revival and the rebranding of our 4K Clubs in all our primary schools. With about 31,218 primary schools and some 10,000 primary school-going children, the 4K Clubs I believe are an invaluable platform for getting children knowledge but also getting them excited about agriculture. With regard to our secondary and tertiary education, we are in conjunction with our development partners also reviving the Young Farmers Clubs to build on the foundations established under the 4K Clubs. The enthusiasm created by these clubs is encouraging young people to take advantage of agricultural opportunities, allowing them to become agribusiness owners, professional trainers, mentors and this all along the value chains. I have had the opportunity to meet up with some of these young men and women and I am very excited and very proud at what they are doing and working towards. We are very hopeful that the country's goal of agricultural transformation will therefore through the hands of this young talent be realized. So ladies and gentlemen, as I conclude, I want to encourage all my fellow heads of state across our continent to prioritize such initiatives in their countries as a way of molding and spurring the young mind into agriculture. For they and they alone are the key to improved food and nutrition security in Africa. So once again, I want to thank all our young people. I want to thank AGRA for their continued great work towards ensuring our continent becomes food secure and to all the officials at the Ministry of Agriculture and indeed all our development partners and also our non-state actors who are participating in this discussion today as well as all those who are following us virtually from Kenya, Africa and around the globe. I thank them for their continued leadership on youth empowerment and a youth-inclusive food system that will transform our continent. I want to thank you all for your attention and thank you all for the great work that you continue to do and give you my assurance that I will be your partner in this journey. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you could just, oh, perfect. Your Excellency, before you joined, before you came on, we asked this particular question to the members of the 4K Club. I'll ask you the same question. Since you talked about supporting agriculture and making it very interesting for the young people now, when you were growing up, what did you want to be?
Well, to be honest, when I was growing up, I wanted to be in the army. But today, if you were to ask me that same question, I think I would say I want to be a farmer because that's what I'm going to be when I retire anyway. I am already a farmer.
That was the right answer, especially with the young guys here. See, two doctors are here and actresses and an actor, so at least farmer. Farmer is a good job. It's a relatively good job if he says it. All right, let's keep this going. We have a very fantastic video that the 4K team, the members of the 4K Club team, put together. But before that, let me call a few people that will ask you a few questions. We'll just have them sit as we play the video. We have Mr. Joseph Madenge, the founder of the G-Star Youth Group here in Kenya. Kindly join us on stage. And we have Lucy Wangare, the founder of Onion Doctor, also kindly join us on stage. So, Your Excellency, Joseph, Lucy and one more person who will be joining online will ask you a few questions right after this video. Enjoy.
From the Liffey suburbs of Nairobi County, we, the Visa Ocean, present "We Shall Speak", by Eduard Wandela. Welcome. Four years, our land has been in tears, tearing down trees, forests cleared, no farming, tree cutting. Then came the drought so terrible to destabilize our food security. Mr. President, today we shall speak. Speak of how happy we are. Speak of how at last the lasting light has shone upon us. Speak of how now we do farming in school. Speak of how now we eat fresh farm products in school. Speak of how now your dream is now a reality. Our voices shall speak as sweet as we speak. Today we shall speak. Can you imagine? Our farm is just in class. As we learn, we plant while the teacher is taking us through mathematics. We irrigate as the science lesson on plants is on. We refer, Mr. President, to the plants in our class. We look ones to say thanks, but still, today we shall speak. Do you know a catfish? Yes, you do. Have you ever seen a catfish? Join us in our school pond, thousands of them swimming in style, jumping and popping, hiding, whistling, breathing out and backing. Indeed, we shall speak to our guests. This idea is noble. Embrace. To our delegates, this idea is marvelous. Adopt. Fellow presidents, this idea is gorgeous. Yes, we have done it. Thanks to you, Mr. President, our able patron. Today we shall speak. As we lay down our pens and pick our watering cans to water the case. As we finish our poem to feed the mooing cows, it's time for them to eat. Join us. Join us at the farm. Mr. President, join us in the farm. Thank you for the 4K Club. The fruits in it, we feast. The experience in it, we benefit. We shall forever pass our exams. We as the young generation shall embrace farming. We shall unite, do and help our country Kenya. And we are done. Bye.
That's what I told you guys. You're my favorite part of the room. Fantastic work. Your Excellency, now is the time for questions. I'll stay right here so I don't steal your shine. Please, it's time for us to get into the particular questions that we have for the session. Get as much insight as possible. Joseph, you're up first.
Thank you so much. Mr. President, good afternoon. My name is Joseph Newton Madenge. I'm a lawyer and I'm a founder of the G-Star Youth Group.
I think you're not as audible.
Could you start? Sorry for that. So as I was saying, good afternoon, Mr. President. My name is Joseph Newton Madenge. I am a lawyer and a founder of the G-Star Youth Group, a group that is based in Nyeri and engaged in the production of green bananas to make banana flour. And I am delighted to be in this summit this year and delighted to have heard you say that yourself, former Prime Minister Desaline, Cabinet Secretary Peter Munya, Dr. Kalibata and all other readers across Africa, that you are here to listen to us, not to dictate to us solutions, to hear from us, to consult us on the way forward in agriculture and our involvement. So I only have one question that we would really as youths appreciate among the many things you have continued to do for us. How well can we be able to access the market that the government keeps getting? For example, like the Africa Free Trade Area, how well can the youths be able to get our products that we have added value? Like my banana flour product, how well can I be able to access the market? What can the government do for us to ensure that our product really gets to the market? Because sometimes we do find a few hitches here and there when we try to access the market. What can the government do for us to enable us to tap into the good market? So that once we do that, our youths, we are gonna be okay, we are gonna be home and dry. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much for that question. And I think the first and most important part of your question is to understand that there is a, it is an all-encompassing process. You know, many people sometimes do not tie the various actions and activities of government and look at it from a wholesome point of view. Why did we, for example, focus ourselves heavily on ensuring that we have increased the number of people who have access to electricity, on increasing water connections across the country, on expanding our road infrastructure across the country? This was not for its sake alone. We were building roads to enable our farmers in very remote parts of our country to be able to move their product from their farms or from the farm gate, bring them closer to where the markets are. We were doing electricity, not for electricity's sake, but to enable young men like yourself to be able to be based in your rural farm, have access to electricity, be able to have the equipment that you need and working in order for you to be able to value add the crops that are in your neighborhood and be able to also move them to market. And that is the same with all these infrastructural projects that we have been doing. It is part of a concerted effort. And what have we moved into now? We're moving now into building markets across all our cities and towns in the country. Here in Nairobi, in Mombasa, in various parts of the country. We are building markets. We are building cooling facilities so that that produce that our farmer grows that comes to market is able to be preserved and actually sold onto the local market. When we make trips abroad, what are we doing? We are flying the Kenyan flag and ultimately flying the flag of our Kenyan farmer. We are encouraging our partners across the globe to buy more Kenyan flowers, to buy more Kenyan tea, to buy more Kenyan coffee. For example, today, a new market that we have opened out, which is in China, we are now pushing avocados and you've seen the explosion of avocado growth in our country. All these activities that we undertake as government are all aimed ultimately at producing and creating opportunities for our young people. We want to see greater value addition being done by people like yourselves and we shall continue. And one of the things that we have also agreed, and that is why I'm saying we want our young people's input. One of the things that we have agreed is that these young people with their increasing number of products, we want them to be part and parcel of our trips abroad so that they are able to market and to showcase and government to be able to work together with our international partners to set up road shows for you. When we are expanding our fiber network and making it easier for you to access e-platforms, this is a basis for you to also use those same e-platforms to establish markets outside this country at a reduced cost without necessarily having to have big stores and shops outside this country but through the use of technology to be able to have access to that market. So these are among some of the things that we are trying to do to ensure that through the various activities that we are engaged in as government ultimately come to benefit you who are in the productive sector, you who are in the agricultural sector. And this is not the end. We are more than happy and that's why I said this is a conversation, not a monologue. These are the things we are doing as government. But we are more than happy to listen to some of the great minds that are in that room telling us what more you think we could do, what we could streamline better in order to make your life easier, in order to make you an agripreneur who will not only create your own business but also help and work together with us to satisfy that which I said in my speech, reduce unemployment in our country. Because your innovation will not only make profit for yourself but will also help employ 20, 30, 100 young men and women who will be able to make a future out of the great ideas some of you have. Ours is what we are doing, some of which I have just expounded on, but also to have open ears, to be able to listen to new suggestions that you may have that may make life easier for you, your business is more profitable and to actually make you entrepreneurs who will help us remove the curse or the plague of unemployment and idleness across the African continent.
Fantastic. Joseph, I hope you got your answer. Perfect. Fantastic. Lucy, it's over to you.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. My name is Lucy Wangare Wanjiko. I am a trained farmer and I am the founder of Onion Doctor. I farm onions and I work with farmers to produce onions. Mr. President, I really hope you had lunch today. And if you did, onion was very basic. It must have been in that meal of yours. If anyone else in this room ate lunch today, onion was part of that meal. So, Mr. President, other things like milk that we consume largely, other things like tea that we consume largely, I'm yet to see someone who is allergic to onions. Anyone in the room, I would really be glad to see any. No one has raised their hand. So that is how basic an onion is. An average Kenyan consumes two onions per day. And so, Mr. President, here is my question. All the other products that I have mentioned, they have governing bodies and structures to help them. If you're talking about maize, we have Kenya seed maize companies that help in the production of the seeds. We have milling, we have all that. Mr. President, I saw yesterday about a drought looming in. But you know what? Onions love the sunny weather. They bloom in the sunny weather, Mr. President. So, Mr. President, look at it critically. Look at the immense potential that onions have to not only employ people but also to feed the Kenyan population. Every day we consume, I mean, there was a study showing by end of this year we're going to consume 93,000 metric tons of onions. I know, that's a lot of numbers right there. So, Mr. President, how do we tap into these big immense opportunities so that we can be able to not only feed ourselves but also create employment in the onion value chain? What are the policies or governing bodies that can help us onion farmers to become bankable and also for us to get to a place where other products like tea, which are basic, have gotten to? Mr. President, don't forget, this is a basic commodity and it can employ us until the day we die. So, Mr. President, give me an answer.
Wonderful, Lucy. I love your question. And that's part and parcel of what I was saying, that by listening to you, we can do better. Because without a doubt, one of the unfortunate aspects about our agricultural policies is in the past has been the fact that we have closed our eyes to the potential of so many different products that we could focus on that would not only make a living for our farmers but also make life that much healthier for all our citizens. And you are indeed right that for too long, our policies, our interventions have been limited to some very few areas. Like you said, staple and even within our staples, only maize. We have forgotten about millet. We have forgotten about all these other wonderful cereals that our grandparents used to grow. that our grandparents used to, used to grow and feed on and very nutritious, even more nutritious than some of the products that we are consuming today. We have forgotten about horticulture. We have forgotten about some of these things as we focus purely on milk. And even in milk, we have forgotten about value addition in the milk chain. Focused on tea because we have always done tea, focused on coffee because we have always done coffee. But you are one hundred percent correct, Lucy. We also need direct government intervention in a number of these other areas. In terms of supporting you and other people like you in the onion business. In terms of giving support, like we give our maize farmers support in terms of fertilizer. We also need to be able to support you in providing you and supporting you in inputs that are related to the particular products that you are growing. Because as you said, it is an essential crop and the opportunity and the market is vast. So here, I am going to actually turn around and say, I'm listening to you, Lucy, and I am promising you that what we are doing now and we will continue to do is to take ideas from people like yourself and actually say that the same support, as you're saying, that we are giving our farmers in other sectors, in tea, in coffee, in maize, in milk, we must also now start extending to our horticultural farmers. We have already begun, for example, again as a result of the cry from our rice farmers, an area that had been completely ignored for many years. We now have government policies that are geared towards our maize farmers. Again, we have wonderful farmers across our country who are engaged in livestock farming, who have for many years been ignored and left at the mercy of middlemen. This is why we are reviving things like KMC, moving towards so that we are able, our farmers to have a constant and ready market for their livestock and not just depend on middle brokers who take advantage of them during the periods of drought and buy their animals at throwaway prices and discourage farmers and discourage our livestock farmers from, from holding strong and healthy cattle. So I want to promise you, Lucy, that you have talked on behalf of all onion farmers in Kenya, and you will see what some of us will begin to do in support of you and others like you in this sector and in many other sectors to enable you and to support you to become that successful onion farmer who is proud of the noble job that you are doing for your fellow citizen.
Lucy, so all of this is on record. So on ninth, we can say on ninth September, twenty twenty-one, as the president listens in, during the AGRF twenty twenty-one summit, His Excellency President Urukanyata said they will start thinking about policy around formerly ignored crops such as onions. So ninth September is the day. Mark that day, okay? Perfect. No pressure.
And hold me to account.
There we go. There we go. Perfect. So the last question we have is from someone joining virtually. Janet Toritich, a farmer, agripreneur, student, and an advocate for youths. Janet? Janet, please go ahead.
She can't hear you. Hi, Janet.
Wow. Unfortunately, unfortunately, we are not able to hear the question from Janet, but she did.
Hi, Mister President.
There we go.
There you go, Janet. The floor is yours. Ask your question.
My name is Janet. You and I, Mister President, understand the impact of investing in youth, especially rural youth, the potential returns aboundless from poverty reduction to employment generation and above all, food security. I have worked with Zafaricom as a mentor and I use the valuable resources that I have in messaging that fellow youth should join me in agri-business. I am not alone. There are others, there are other youth who are also game changers in this space. Is there a commitment in your administration that allows young people like this to be part of the critical decision-making processes in?
I understand you correctly wanted to know whether there is any room for young people in critical decision-making in our country?
Yes, that's it. That's the question.
If that is the question, Janet, I want to say, yes, indeed, there is. You only need to look at your cabinet or your chief administrative secretary in the Ministry of Agriculture. She is a young person like yourself. And the reason she is there is because we are very keen for others like you to be able to engage with a person your own age, somebody who understands you, somebody who is close to you, somebody who has shared similar experiences to yourself, and to be able to bring on board those ideas that you have into the decision-making at the national level. Our dear CAS has been very instrumental, for example, in the revival of the 4K Club and the Young Farmers Club. She has also been very instrumental in ensuring that our government programs, finance programs are also geared towards helping our young farmers in accessing finance for their various programs and projects. And without doubt, I would encourage her to also have regular forum meetings with people like yourself to hear your ideas so that she can come into our meetings at the national level and tell us that which we can do to make your life easier, to make your life better. But most importantly, Janet, and to all of you young people who are also listening, don't talk about this issue of where is our space. I want to repeat again, sixty percent of our population is you, the young people of this republic. And sometimes it is said, you must take the future destiny into your own hands. Take up positions in politics, become MCAs, become MPs, become presidents. Don't just wait for others to come and tell you what is good for you. You must tell us. And you must take control of your own destiny. So like I'm saying, we will continue to have an open ear, to give access to our young people because we believe in them. But young people must also be ready to fill and take up the space of leadership and taking control of their future, of their destiny, and placing it in their own hands. And in that, we will support you, we will encourage you. And I look forward to the day, you know, Janet, you as a, as a, as a young agri entrepreneur will be president of this republic and answering the questions, but you will now have the knowledge of knowing what you need to do because you will have the voice of your people in your ears.
Thank you very much, Janet. Thank you. Thank you very much, Your Excellency. Please, a warm round of applause for that. Mister President, we appreciate you creating time to speak to us of, I'm sure, what is a very busy schedule. At this point, please, we'd like to take a few pictures. Please, if you could just stay on the screen. I know you can't see how the room is set up, but you're right as the backdrop of anyone who will take a picture. So please, as a proper supporter and of course, board chair, His Excellency Halemariam Desale, please join us. Of course, a good friend of the country as well. Former Prime Minister of Benin, Salonel Zensu, please join us as well. CAS Aninyaga, please join us. Honorable Muniya kindly join us. You see how they know they are the honorable, but they, they want me to call them. Everyone knows. They know all their names. Dr. Agnes kindly, if you could just join us. Anyone who is a president at heart, join us. No, please, no. Is there anyone I could be missing at this point? Good to go. Oh, you're right in the middle. Yes, they'll come. So this was just one second because it's not about the people on stage. I apologize. It's for the young people. Kindly, if the 4K members could just join in front, right in front. Kuungana, Kuharakisha. Yeah, even that, even that, right there is fine. A bit lower? If anything, Mister President, I really commend you for your commitment to these pictures. Alright, we're good to go? Perfect. In three, two, one, say agripreneur. Three, two, one. Farmer. In three, two, one. Wow. More enthusiasm. I, onions. Thank you. Thank you very much to everyone. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Can, can the rest of you, can the rest of you just leave the stage and leave my, my brother Halemariam? It's the first time I'm gonna have a picture with him when I'm looking bigger than he is.